Twenty-four. The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. Do you all stand for the board? For the, George?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call a roll, Sonya?
Mr. Alleso.
Here.
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 Mr. Flowers?
Here.
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 The coroner?
Here.
Nice on the same field here.
Okay. Before we get to the minutes, which is number five on the agenda, I think that we're going to have, we've adjusted the agenda a little bit tonight. First of all, we'll state now that Red Bull will not be presenting anything tonight. That will be, there's a special meeting on the 22nd. Mr. Warner can fill us in on what's happening there.
Certainly, that's my understanding as well. Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for the Red Bull's application. Found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served. Certified mail on April 19 and April 26, published on April 25th, so both were at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the matter, and most importantly for this evening, has jurisdiction to carry the matter without further notice from this evening to, as I understand it, Wednesday, May 22nd, a special meeting at 7:00 PM at the same municipal building, correct, Sonya?
Yes.
So I think we're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so again, that will be the 22nd where they will be hearing their Red Bull's application. It won't be tonight. The second change is we're going to move what's number seven, their Crum and Forster application, up first ahead of the Lidl application. So we'll start that immediately after we look at the minutes. Have you all a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting, which was April 1st? Any comments, changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go on, thank you. Call in favor.
All right.
Any votes? Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you again, Sonya, for getting them out.
I will note that this is an order of state. That's how I understand it as well.
Okay. So can we move on to application PB0124? Sonya, do you want to introduce that? The Crum and Forster. Yeah.
Okay, this is PB01-24 Crum and Forster for site plan waiver, block 8304, lot 30, 305 Madison Avenue in the O.S. by zone. Applicant proposes a minor site plan approval to replace the existing freestanding sign in the front yard area with a larger sign that identifies additional tenants with the street, with the street address.
Mr. Warner?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, again, with your permission, I did have an opportunity to review the notice for that application. Found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served and published. Served on April 22nd, published April 25th, both more than 10 days prior to this evening. So with this application, as with the last one we spoke of, the board has jurisdiction to hear and decide the application.
Okay, I guess we're ready to proceed. Mr. Rossi.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, on behalf of the Red Bulls, we thank the board for accommodating that special meeting. Thank you very much. On this application, my name is Nick Raciopi from the law firm of Riker Danzig, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Crum and Forster. This application is a simple application. It's simply to replace the existing sign that's there now with a more modern and, I think, more aesthetically pleasing, up-to-date sign. So technically, the application seeks a site plan waiver, or if the board does not want to grant a site plan waiver, alternatively, we ask for an amended site plan approval to replace the existing freestanding sign located at the property with a more modern and larger freestanding sign. The existing sign is 13.5 feet wide by 2.67 feet high, and the proposed sign is 10 foot by 10 feet. It's important to note that the new sign will be in the same place as the existing sign, exactly the same place. So we're just pulling up one and putting in a new, modern sign, and the sign complies with all the applicable sign regulations of Morris Township. If the town would like, I really have only one witness unless the town has questions because we do have the sign person here from the sign company, as well as the engineer if they have any questions. But I just wanted to have Chris Thomasulo from Crum and Forster to talk about why she sees the need for the new sign and why she thinks it's a benefit.
Chris, if you have a minute?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll swear that witnesses in, as well as our board professionals.
Yes, please do.
If all three of you will raise your right hand, do all three of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony, if you could just raise your right hand, please? Do all three of you swear to God or affirm the testimony you're about to give us, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you all.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you very much, Nick. Chris Thomasula from Crum and Forster, as Nick had mentioned.
But before we get started, can you just mention what your title is and generally what your role is at Crum and Forster?
Oh, sure. My title is Assistant Vice President with the Real Estate and Facility Services Department. I've actually been with Crum and Forster for 38 years. My responsibility is maintaining our headquarters, which is now a multi-tenant building. We were lucky enough to get tenants during COVID. We adopted a hybrid work schedule, so a lot of Crum and Forster staff went remote and, you know, comes in on a hybrid schedule. So we have leased the second floor of our building to Stiefel Investment Services. We leased.
I'm sorry, leased it to who? If you could move the mic a little.
Stiefel.
Oh, yes.
I don't need that.
Thank you. So we leased the second floor of our facility to Stiefel Investment Services. They moved in in April of this year. We have Intercept Pharmaceuticals on a portion of the first floor, and we also have Private Advisor Group on a portion of the first floor. So under the lease, we are obligated to note our tenants on the monument sign.
And I'm not going to hold you to this, Chris, but do you know how long the current sign has been there? It's been there a while, hasn't it?
It's been there as long as I can remember. I moved to that location in the mid-'90s.
Okay, thank you. That's all we really have. I mean, if you want to hear, if you have any questions for the engineer about placement, but it's on the plant, or the details of the sign, we do have Daniel Farkas from Designer Sign Systems, he could talk a little bit more about the detail of the sign, lighting, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions for the signage.
Okay.
How would you bring them up?
Okay, I have some questions too.
I also have a question, I'm sorry. I also have a question, though, for maybe the planner. What's the variance? How many square footage is this over? There, there, replace an existing sign, which, Mr. Raciopi just gave you the dimensions, with a sign that's 10 feet by 10 feet, which is the maximum, 100 square feet that's allowed in some sort of variance-free.
So there's no height restriction on the size of the sign?
So the issue is that this is a different sign than the one that was initially approved way back when?
Yes.
But it still meets?
It's conforming.
It conforming, okay.
So there is no height issue?
I don't believe so, but I will double check while the next witness.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's just on the square feet, so I'll double check, yeah.
Did you?
I have a question for this witness, if, well, we don't care. Okay, real quick. So I see that you have four companies on your sign, and there's a, looks like a blank spot for an additional tenant?
Yes, that's because our tenants have the right to sublease if need be.
Are you expecting to further subdivide the Crum and Forster building that would require that this sign be changed at any time in the future?
Not that I know of, no.
So there would be, that blank space could possibly be filled in, but?
Correct, but at this point, we have no need.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Bud's question pops into my head as a second question. What happens if you get a sixth tenant? Is there any idea on how you would, I mean, it sounds to me like your leases are set up in such a way that every tenant has monument identification?
Correct.
So what happens when you divide a space, let's say, Stiefel, site, whatever?
Stiefel.
Doesn't, a couple of years from now, they decide to divide in half?
Then we have that, then we have that extra space.
And Intercept decides to divide in half?
Crum's going to take it back.
And there's, I'll just say, generally in real estate, right, either the last doesn't get a sign because they're last in line, or if they're leasing or subleasing from a current tenant, then they would have to decide to split that sign.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, so there's a maximum of five names would be on the monument?
Yes.
It's not uncommon for a panel to be split with two names on it?
Right.
And then it turns into, five turns into 10.
Right.
So the ability is there for the sign to be split further without changing, altering the sign in any significant way?
Yeah, we'll have to ask the sign expert on that.
I mean, I think, I think Joe and I are on the same page here, what happens if, you know, in a year or two, there's six, seven tenants?
We're not, we're not anticipating any more tenants. They don't, if there's a subtenant, they typically don't get a sign on the monument. A monument sign is a pretty big deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Quillman?
I have a question and I guess a comment. I don't find this sign more attractive than the current sign. I find it significantly less attractive. I don't know whether other members of the board feel the same way, but to me, this sign has a, has an industrial feel to it. It feels like it belongs in a different kind of zone than where your beautiful building is located. I think the, the update to the building that was done not too long ago really made it an extremely attractive building, and I don't think this sign really matches the appearance of the building very well. That's my own view. I'm probably not famous for my aesthetic taste, so perhaps, perhaps others will disagree. My question is whether you would consider deleting the number on the sign that faces the street? So on the narrow side of the sign, there's a 305 in your diagram that faces Madison Avenue.
That could be considered, yeah.
And to me, that's the most unattractive part of the sign, and I wonder if you would just turn that back into a blank, like what the current sign has? So that's something I would ask you to consider, see what your reaction is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a contrary view. I think the sign is very attractive, and I will add that people driving down Madison Avenue in front of your building have, need to have the, the address identification easily recognizable. So I hear what you're saying about the number being quite large, that might be where your objection is, but the color aesthetic and the sign in general, I think is, is okay. If you wanted the sign number smaller, that would be one thing that, you know, otherwise I have no problem with.
At least I know it's not very close to the street. It's a good 50 feet from the sidewalk.
And there's trees around, it's a setback. But I just want to be clear, Mr. Quillman, are you saying that you would rather not the one number facing the street, but the two on the sides are okay? Or you're saying get rid of all numbers?
The one that faces the street is the one that bothers me the most.
Okay, I think we could do that, right? Yeah, that we could do it, but I defer to the, we'll do what the board suggests, either way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We don't need all three.
I do frequent a lot of the buildings on Madison Avenue, and for me, having the sign numbers is very helpful, and I don't object to the sign number in more than one place.
Yeah, I don't really object to it either because it's kind of tucked in the trees. I think the one facing the street is probably the one that's most visible if you're trying to find out what the address is, so I don't have an issue with that.
I didn't even notice there was a little straw pole.
Yeah, a little straw pole here, anybody? Numbers as they are, or you want to remove the one?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
We're okay with it as it is, I guess, so.
Especially at 2:00 in the morning.
Well, that's right.
You're taking away my next question for the, for the sign person.
Do you want to hear the sign person?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I guess, yes.
Okay, and no further questions for Ms. Thomasulo?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can open to public questioning after all witnesses.
Yes, I'll be in this case, I think that's, yes, thank you.
And I'll swear in as well, if you'll raise your right hand, do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Daniel Farkas, I'm a partner at Designer Sign Systems. We are based in Branchburg, New Jersey, have been in operation for approaching 50 years. I've been with the firm for about 10 years now.
I think instead of hearing direct testimony, we'll just open up, Mr. Farkas, for any questions the board might have?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, my first question is lighting. So you guys all know about my pet peeve about the Providence Bank, I can see it from Florida late at night. Just trying to get a sense of how bright that sign's going to be at 9:00, 2:00, whether it's going to, whether this lighting will reduce after a certain amount of hours, or whether it's going to stay that bright throughout the night.
So typically, the, the local municipality will determine if we need to shut that off or not. It can be set up with a timer, if that's what, you know, the board decides at 10:00 PM needs to be shut off, or, or otherwise, but it can be set up with a timer or dimmer on it if that's what you decide.
But I think there, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that it doesn't need to shut off because you still want the identification, but maybe a dimmer after a certain time.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the board's pleasures, and I don't know what the municipalities' rulings are, but in my opinion, after a certain time at night, it would be nice to see it get a little dimmer. But the other question is, I didn't, maybe I just didn't look for it hard enough, but was there any lumens on the sign?
We have not.
Candles, can you see how it would be? Do we have any idea of how bright the sign is?
No, we have, we have not provided.
My question for our planner, then, do we have regulations, rules on, maybe it's an engineer question?
Not with regard to the real sign.
It may be fair, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to ask, and I suspect I know the answer, whether there would be any light spillage beyond the property line as a result of the sign?
Not that.
One can answer that question.
I can't definitively say that, but no, I would not imagine that there would be light projecting beyond the property.
And it is set back 50 feet or so?
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's internally illuminated with LEDs.
No, I understand, that's what they told us with the Providence Bank signs, see that from the roof right now. It's a sensitive area, so I apologize.
Understood, understood. Not at all.
Should be aware of it.
Well, I think it's a good point, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to piggyback on what my colleague had said because I too am, and I think the entire board is concerned about light pollution and night skies, every municipality should be, and I think I could try to articulate this, the sign would be brightest, in my, in my view, at dusk when you have, you know, a mix of daylight and twilight, but as the night wears on, if the sign stays that bright, it becomes a glare, not only to uncovering drivers, but, you know, light pollution on the road itself. So getting back to the dimming aspect of it, there would be a gradual dimming, so, you know, by 11, by 10, 11, 12, up through, you know, the dawn hours, it would be dim and then gradually, again, illuminate as the, as the dawn comes to a certain level. In this way, it doesn't provide as much light leakage, so does the sign have that capability?
It can be added, certainly. It's not something that was originally designed as part of it. Like I said, typically, it's either on or off, but a dim, like I said, it's just an addition to the.
I think that Joe and I are on the same page with this, that it should, it should dim as the night grows dark.
Is, is the current sign on 24 hours?
No.
The light's on?
Sorry.
What?
No. It shuts off.
It shuts off? Okay, so would there be any issue in running it on the same schedule that the current sign is?
We, I think.
I thought I saw it somewhere in the application that that was true, but I haven't been able to find it, so.
We're happy to defer to the board. I would just say that if there's more tenants, some might be there at night, so I think the dimmer approach might work a little better, so, but we again defer to the board's wishes on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What about just like picking midnight and saying at midnight the sign should shut off? I understand what you're saying, if it's 8:00 at night, 9:00 at night, somebody might get, might be getting guests.
Yeah, yeah.
Totally understandable, so you'd want the light on at night, but I don't think they're working probably at midnight.
We're happy.
The dimming is satisfies everybody, I think.
I'm fine either way, I just don't want to see it at 2:00.
Right, I hear you, I'm the same way.
And it's in, obviously, we all know the Crum and Forster building, you know, it's in an area, it's set back enough, and there's some trees around, but I don't think a dim sign at that time would create any pollution.
Not at all.
Can we just get an hour when it, when it dims? And then when it goes off, if at any point, when it comes, pops back on and?
That's, that's, so we defer to the board.
Well, then the board's.
They do make a suggestion?
Yes.
That it dims to 50% at 10:30 at night? And it stays at 50% through the night?
And through the night, and then at dawn, it can go back to full brightness.
10:30 to dawn.
Or awful, totally. We need to light it.
Well, no, you can light it because it's, it's a landmark. If it's, if it's dimmed at 2:00 in the morning, it's not going to bother anybody, but you'll want to see it again at dawn.
And, and.
Yes, it will.
We're not requiring that the lights stay on at night. If you want to turn it off, that would be fine too, for energy savings, if you don't need it on, right?
That'll be subject to the review and approval of our engineer, assuming approval.
A quick question on the sign design, and if I understand the renderings correctly, on the new sign, the proposed sign, it's basically the letters that are illuminated?
Correct, the numerals and the, and the character.
Whereas on the old sign, it's basically a big white background?
Yes.
That, that holds the, okay.
The old sign is old school, that, I don't know what it is, it feels like, looks like plastic with a.
But it's, it's a big, I mean, just from the photo, it's a big white area that's, that's lit, and then, and so the lettering is darkened and relieved, yeah, okay, whereas now the.
It's the inverse.
It's only the inverse of that, so.
Correct.
Let's, also. Any other comments, questions? Do we have any, well, do we have anything from our professionals? Jim?
Just as all up to Joe's question, the ordinance allows a maximum of 10 foot.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, so it does fit that too. Mr. Phillips?
Is the, I know the TCC report asked for sort of material unfinished, is this sort of like metal, is it metal?
Aluminum, yes. It's a dense dental cut aluminum with acrylic characters.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
If I may, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
It looks like, maybe at the evening, okay, so everything's covered in the planners' report. Fire official was no question or comment, site inspection was additional specs on illumination, so I believe that's been provided. And just, as I believe the board's aware, our current ordinance provision provides for site plan waiver, and it might seem a little cumbersome the way the applicant requested site plan waiver, or in the alternative amended site plan approval. In fairness to the applicant, I think that's a good way to go, and candidly, I would suggest that perhaps it be considered by the board as an amended approval, because as you may recall, our provision of 57-96C for site plan waiver gives the board the discretion to grant that site plan waiver after hearing sufficient evidence, which generally is sufficient evidence, for an amended approval anyway, in my opinion at least. So rather than decide, okay, we've heard everything, you don't have to get site plan approval from us, it sounds to me as if it might be more appropriate for the board, that's a conclusion, to simply grant amended approval.
With waivers?
With.
Other waivers requested on the checklist?
With waivers on the checklist, yeah, but there's no, there's no deviations requested from the, from the applicant. So in any event, I don't know if that makes it any simpler, but I wanted to help explain why there was an alternative approach requested by the applicant, and the board might, members might ask themselves, well, which should we pick and why? My suggestion would be amended approval.
Amended approval, okay. Any other questions? Then any, any questions from the public for these, for these witnesses? I'm seeing none, we'll close public comment?
Public comment in general? You're closing all public comment?
Public, that was closing the questions portion of it, right, yes, yes. It said next is comment, yes, okay, so now we have, you know, any, any questions or comments by the public? No, there are neither, so we'll close the public comment period. Thank you, Mr. Aless.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move this along and make a motion that we grant the applicant amended site plan approval with waivers, with the caveat that they will either decide to shut the light off at a certain time at night, or dim it down to 50% at 10:30.
Second.
Call the roll? Did you get the second?
Mr. Alleso?
Yes.
It's an order?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. By?
Yes.
Thank you. Good job.
I like it, I like. You want, you want this as an extra map, please? Do you want this as an extra map to the station or something? If you can use it for identification?
Yeah.
I mean, you got an extra one, you throw it out. We are old fashioned. Carry map.
Joe, we think alike.
Just moving it along.
Love it.
We got, this is like a, a meeting of signs tonight.
Yeah. It's a sign night. It's a sign, it's a sign from God.
What are the odds of three of us? Okay.
Okay, moving on to PB0823. Sonya, could you introduce that for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is PB0823 Lidl US LLC for a site plan variant. This is block 10401 lot 301, 1910 over at him. Applicant proposes installation of additional signs that would include another 500 sign, a monument sign, and a series of temporary light pole banners.
Mr. Warner?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, the, we previously outlined that the notice was sufficient, I believe on March 4th originally, it may have been, but it has been carried the matter without further notice since, to this evening. We have amended site plan approval and a couple of redevelopment agreement deviations with respect to monument law sign, and a couple of variances with respect to temporary signage. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rossi, are you ready to proceed with this?
Yes, yes, so again, for the record, Nick Raciopi from the law firm of Riker Danzig, representing the applicant Lidl, like needle, that's with Mr. D'Amico, Lidl US LLC. Lidl is currently a tenant at Morris Market Place. In September of last year, Morris Market Place received minor subdivision approval to create a separate tax lot for Lidl so that it could sell that piece to Lidl. That minor subdivision has not yet been perfected. We recently received an extension of the time period to perfect that minor subdivision while we resolved some issues with the building, the farm, which are. the planning, which are in progress. So tonight, we are here for approval simply to install some additional signage. A third wall sign, a third monument sign, and some temporary banners. And you're going to hear from, we have three folks to testify tonight, and you will hear the detail, more detail with each witness that we will call. First, if the board has no objection, I'd call Mr. Stephen D'Amico of Lidl. He'll explain why it's important for Lidl to have these signs, to, to really help with the success of Lidl at the center. Second, we'll call Andrew O'Malley of Bowler, and he's going to talk about the engineering details a little bit and where the signs are that we're talking about. And then finally, we'll, we'll call Mr. Eric Keller of Bowman, and he's going to talk about the specifics of the signs, the details of the signs and the variances we are requesting. So I just, I, I point that out so we don't ask the specifics of the signs early to Mr. D'Amico, but we leave that to Mr. the engineer and then to Mr. Keller. So if there are no objections, I'd like to call our first witness, Mr. D'Amico.
Do we want to swear them all in?
I'm happy to do so, Mr. Chairman, as well as our board professionals. So if everyone who will be testifying will raise their right hand, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you all.
So, Mr. D'Amico, would you give the board your title at, at Lidl, your role generally? And just a brief description of the operations of Lidl and why you think it's important to have these additional signs?
Of course. My name is Stephen D'Amico with Lidl US. My position is Senior Construction Manager. I also manage the, the real estate development operations in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. The reason why we're asking for the additional signage at this location, as you may or may not know, Lidl is a German-based brand. We've been operating in Germany for almost 50 years. Lidl is a household name in, in Europe and in many areas of the world, but unfortunately not in this area of the US. And you'll notice that on our signs, we've had to add food market to clarify to our customers that, you know, we're not selling cars, we're not selling furniture or electronics, we're in the grocery business. So signage is, is really important to us to attract new customers and help move our expansion up and down the East Coast. Without the food markets signage and the additional signage that we're asking, it's really affected some of our businesses, and this will help attract and attain new customers at our, at our new store that opened in September of last year.
I, I wanted to make one other point clear, because in our initial application, we were also seeking a modification of a, of a condition about the hours to, to have the truck come between the prohibited hours and the resolution. But after speaking to Lidl and Mr. D'Amico and, and some of the adjoining residents, we decided to withdraw that. So it's only about the signs tonight. So I open. Any questions the board have?
Any questions?
Yeah, just go on.
I have a question. There are two additional signs requested. One is on the face of the store, I believe headed, pointed toward, I don't have my directions right, but ported toward Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Yes.
Into the interior of the mall. And the other, could you explain where the other one is?
The monument sign?
Yes.
That'll be the next witness, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll point out.
He's just talking about the, why they're asking for them? Yeah, okay.
Sure. So the, the, the sign facing the balance of the center is, is there to draw customers down to our building. We're at the end cap, furthest from the main point of access to the center, so that's going to give us good visibility to customers coming in and out. The monument is, is about 250 feet from the intersection. There is an out parcel between us, the Lidl building and the intersection. So our visibility, if you're sitting at the intersection, you obviously would see the Taco Bell, and you'd be driving past our store before you noticed it that we were there. So with it, by adding a sign up on, on the road, the intent is that you'll see us while you're at the intersection, and you won't have to do some kind of crazy maneuver to turn around and come back, and you can follow the natural flow of traffic there as well.
Okay, I'm not sure I completely understand, but it sounds like I should ask my questions of, of a later witness. Is that correct? Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I'm going to ask the same question, because I know Joe's going to ask about, that we asked from, from Foresters about the signage brightness and, and dark sky that we all want, trying to preserve, especially in that area of town where it's already very, very well lit. I would imagine that after certain hours, that we could dim this, the sign a little bit. So drivers driving, you know, in the wee hours of the morning or whatnot, aren't hit with, you know, this ultra-bright light that are coming from either the sign that's going to be on the, the building, you know, facing the main part of, of the, of the shopping mall, or the one on the road that's going to be, that might create some clarity with driver, you know, in the wee hours. So is that something that, you know, Lidl can do?
The, the building sign will be tied into the, the BMS, our, our management system, so that'll come on and off when the store opens and closes. The sign.
The same as the, the current signs on the building?
Correct.
By same schedule?
On and off.
Come on and off, correct. The, the sign out at the street, the monument, is not internally illuminated. It'll be illuminated externally. So thus reducing glare, and it will, like I said, come on and off with this, with the building signs as well. So you've got all the signs kind of coming on and off at the same time.
So it'll be lit upwards?
Correct.
Into the sky? Is there anything we can do to light it downwards so we don't bleed light into the sky?
Can look into that, sure.
That would be good.
Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Alessio.
Just want to confirm. So all the signs, what you're saying is when the store shuts off at night, the signs all shut off at night?
Correct. It's actually 30 minutes after we close.
It's not, they're not, so like you're closed at two o'clock in the morning, the signs are not on.
We close at 10, so.
If you're closed at two o'clock in the morning, the signs are off at two o'clock in the morning.
Technically, correct.
Okay, that's great. It's just one other question, I'm sorry. And I know this might not be the right witness, but I'll ask the question. So currently, there's a such, I'll call it a shopping center monument.
Right.
And you have a piece of the shopping center?
Yes.
Monument. In addition to that, you'll have your own monument.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And, and we'll show you where they are.
Go prior.
Any other questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not sure this is the right witness or the right time to answer this question, but I'm thinking about it, and I'm thinking about all the other stores in that shopping center. They all decide, oh, we need another sign. You know, or we need in our own monument. I'm concerned about setting a precedent here, so I was wondering if you've discussed this with other stores, whether you have experience with other stores, and whether this is a common request for more signage, because I could imagine this could kind of let, carry out of the bag, and all of a sudden we have 25 monument signs and, and other stores looking for more signage, and, and I'm just concerned about that. I don't know whether you can even comment on it. It's not really a question for you, but it's a concern that I have.
It's a good concern. We don't want sign pollution either, but this is an end cap. It's probably, I don't have the dimensions, but it is the largest. And the monument sign, no one else is going to get a monument sign by themselves just for this. This happens to be a monument sign, and you'll see where it is pointing more of a directional signage to the, to the Lidl. So you have the biggest building on an end cap with an entrance, with the monument sign pointing to a side entrance that leads to the Lidl, instead of going around and doing a loop either around the streets or in the shopping center, which we don't want. So that, and obviously, we need a variance, so if someone else came in, you can easily deny that. Because of the, because of the, because of the unique.
We can always easily deny them.
Because of the unique attributes of Lidl. That's why we think it's appropriate here, and may not be for just one tenant in the middle asking for a, a special sign.
Okay, thank you.
I would not undertake that representation.
Mr. Slate, Mr. Phillips, any comments at this time?
No, I, I'm going to have some questions.
Yeah, okay.
Details for lighting, uplifting on that side, but.
Okay.
I, I think it, so with, with respect to the uplifting, I think it's proposed, but there's no detail. So we would propose dealing with the professionals on appropriate lighting for the sign that the professionals would approve.
As a condition to be approved.
By, by up, you're talking downward lit.
Yeah, I'm in favor of downward lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know what he meant. I know what he meant, referring to the uplight meaning instead of.
Whatever is lighting sounds like downward that the professionals would approve.
So we have a condition stipulated by the applicant. I did have one question, if I may, Mr. Just.
Yes, Mr. Warner.
For the witness or Mr. Rassiopi, but, but this application is being made by Lidl for a lot that, like, I assume soon the, the subdivision will be perfected, and it'll be the Lidl lot in and of itself. The, in the event one day, many, many, many moons from now, the, and suns, the, Lidl were not the tenant on that particular lot, the monument, the relief is granted, and the monument sign is installed. I take it it'll, I'm just thinking out loud, it'll run with the lot, in essence.
Yes.
So whichever tenant, should there be a subsequent tenant on that lot, they would, it would be their monument sign.
But, so I just want to clarify your use of the word tenant. They are a tenant right now as we await the subdivision.
They'll be the owner.
Be an owner.
Correct.
And so we'll run with the land, so a subsequent owner will have that same monument for, for that end cap.
And the three signs.
The monuments.
And the three signs on the buildings.
On the building.
On the building.
Oh, yes, yes.
Just, yes, quick point. But we're being asked to approve the monument sign for Lidl because they need it to prove that they're a food market versus a, you said a car dealership? So.
Furniture.
That, I guess that would be the question, is should it run with the lot or should it run with the business?
Well, it would run with the lot.
Right.
The land, which is about to become a separate and independent lot. I don't want to make anyone's case or not, or, or, but I, I believe I heard more than just the particular store's concern with its, with the market understanding that it's a market. But because I thought I heard something about a Taco Bell blocking to some degree and/or impacting the identity of where the direction, you know, the location, the ingress is for the, on that boulevard of men, by Men and Arena.
Yes, so I think you'll see it better when we get to the engineer. You'll see exactly where it's located. So I think it's also identification, and I think anyone in that end cap, it's a pretty sizable building. I think it would help identification for drivers along the way. Because we only have really that one, we, we have two, but the other one is further away. We have that one big monument sign and nothing really at this end cap.
But I think, I think it's fair, board member Alessio's, Vice Chair Alessio's concern, or issue expressed, that like with any variance relief, you can't assume it's going to be the same. The applicant is going to be the same recipient of the benefit of that relief forever, so.
Can I just add to that?
You're, you're better suited. You're the.
I think, I think we have to hear the testimony, but I would see nothing wrong with if, and again, we have to hear the testimony, whether it's blocked, whether it's the, the user needs the identification. But I see nothing wrong with a condition that if it's not Lidl, the sign would have to go away if the board felt that that was appropriate, which I think is Joe's point.
Yes.
I mean, we're going to have to hear the testimony and decide.
There's also somebody else's point about, do we set a precedent?
If it's a separate lot and the monument signs on the separate lot, why would it have to go away? I don't get that.
Well, I think we need to hear the testimony.
Well, we're arguing a hypothesis that, yeah, it's just.
I'm just saying theoretically, Joe's point is legitimate. If, if the board were to feel that this sign was only needed for this particular user, in my opinion, and I'm not the board attorney, they'd have every right to condition the approval that if it's just for this particular user at Supermarket, I think we have to hear the testimony.
True, with the only caveat being we have to be careful about giving variance relief based upon solely upon occupability. Have to avoid any potential claim of discrimination as the user and occupant as a, but there would be a basis under that circumstance. We're getting academic.
Yes, we are. Mr. Chairman?
But I, I, I would, I would concur, you know, if the only reason were, were Lidl, well, then there's an appropriate, I think, restriction that could be, I could handle that. If there's more to the story, let's hear it, yeah.
Yes.
Um, I, when is it appropriate to speak about the changes in operation? Is that with this person or someone else's operations?
There are no changes in operation.
Uh, as long as delivery trucks is.
They've withdrawn that.
Okay, oh, you withdrew that?
Yeah, they withdrew that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Do we need questions of the public from, for this one? Is there? I guess we can open it up. Questions for this witness? I guess not? Okay, then why don't you?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Andrew O'Malley?
Arthur O'Malley.
It may be far for some, but maybe I'll illuminate our point here.
Before you get started, Andrew, would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Andrew O'Malley. I work for Bowler Engineering for approximately the past 10 years. I've been a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey for approximately three. My address is 181 South Street in Morristown, and my license is currently in good standing.
And have you prepared, have you appeared in front of planning boards prior throughout the state?
Appeared in front of a number of forests in the state of New Jersey, but never here in Morristown Township, so.
And you've been accepted as an expert?
And I have been accepted as an expert.
I'd ask that you be accepted as an expert.
I will accept it, yes.
All right, thank you. So I know this subject site has been the, the object of a number of applications. We've talked about subdivisions, redevelopment approval, things of that nature. But again, just want to help clarify, because I know there's some confusion about what the application actually is. We're going to be discussing only the signage as part of this application. So to help me to do that, I do want to introduce my first exhibit here, signage exhibit. The exhibit was prepared by our office and is dated today, May 6th, 2024. And for reference, north is to the top, top right of the page, I'll try to help orient all of us to where these improvements are going to be.
We'll call it Exhibit A1.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, you don't have these digitally?
It's tricky, it's not.
You don't have these digitally?
Uh, that, I do not have digitally with me, no.
Focus was wonderful. Everything was digital. All the signs, no one has digital.
If, if the board does have the previously prepared, prepared landscape buffer plans in front of them, all of the signage that is proposed on this plan is the same. That's all my exhibit on the second page there. So second page of that exhibit does have all of the same signage, the monument sign, the building mounted sign, and the banner signs. So just briefly discuss, I know we're all probably familiar with the marketplace at this point, but just to discuss the existing conditions briefly. We are here at 191 East Hanover Ave in the township of Morris in Morris County, otherwise known as block 10401, lot 3.01, subdivided formerly from lot 3. And this lot still is bordered, I'll say, to the west by Men and Sports Arena, to the north by East Hanover Ave, the town of Hanover, some other office and retail use could be on that. To the south and east, we do have the remainder of the shopping center and the access to Martin Luther King Avenue. To the south, we also are bordered by residential development and the county of Morristown beyond that. As I mentioned earlier, just signage here, so nothing is. As I mentioned earlier, just signage here, so nothing is changing from a bulk perspective. So no additional parking, no additional building area setback changes, nothing like that, just the signage here. And similarly, our access points to Menon Ave, East Hanover Ave and Martin Luther King Avenue are all going to remain. So if anyone has any questions on existing conditions, we can go over them now, but if not, talk briefly about the signage. All right, so I think as my colleague here, Stephen mentioned before, and I think this may help a little bit with some of the necessity for the signage. Lidl really is a, like you said, a new player in the grocery store game. It's a highly competitive environment in the United States, especially in the East Coast. And Lidl not being a well-known name, signage is very important and branding is very important. I know some of you kind of make light of the fact that there is the words food market on the signage, but it is, as Lidl found in their market research, very important to them. So I'll talk first about the building mounted signs. You know, we have these three types, the building mounted, the monument signage and the banner signs. So the building mounted sign is being proposed on the southeast projection of the building. And this is facing kind of internal to the parking lot. But I think more importantly, this building mounted sign is facing what I would consider the main entrance of the building. I have been to the site and I use it on occasion. That really is what I would consider the main method of getting into the site.
Main entrance to the shopping center.
Correct.
You said the main entrance to the building.
Excuse me. Main entrance to the shopping center on East Hanover Avenue. And this, this building mounted sign does face that. Now, from a content and characteristic perspective, the sign is near identical or identical to the previously approved signs on the northern and eastern facades of the building. So it's still approximately 126 and a half square feet. It's still going to have the Lidl logo and the words food market in channel letters beneath it. And it's going to be illuminated internally the same way the existing signs are. So really, you're not going to see anything new as part of this sign. It's just going to be an additional sign on that southeast corner of the building.
Andrew, can you point out on the plan where the, where the additional sign will be?
Absolutely. So it's just on the, I'll call it the southern facade of the building here, a small portion projecting out just in front of the other uses, users to the south, the Lidl here.
And can you point out the entrance to the shopping center there?
And the entrance to the shopping center is just at the right edge of the page here, on the center of Hanover Ave.
Okay, thank you.
So again, as I mentioned here, we've got, the, the main Lidl parking field is directly in front of the building, which is being, I'll say serviced by the eastern facade sign. But any user that would be parking to go to a different building or coming in from this main entrance on the right side of the page here is going to be directly looking at that projection, which is really why it's been located where it is. So if there's any questions on the building mounted sign, I'd be happy to, to answer where I can.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a, I have a good neighbor question.
Okay.
The new sign D on the plans that were distributed to us, it looks like it is next to another tenant. And was there any discussion with the other tenant about the fact that that sign was going to be there and making sure that they were?
I'm, I'm not aware of any discussions with a tenant. Have you had any? None that, none that we're aware of at this time?
None you're aware of, okay. Just a curiosity over whether that would cause them some kind of.
They would have been noticed.
They would have been noticed for sure, so they're not here. I guess that's our answer, right?
And just because it was brought up by, by Stephen earlier, I do want to mention that the, the internal illumination is controlled the same way that all the other illumination of the signs are, turning off and on with the opening and closing of the store in that manner as well. So in addition to that building mounted sign.
One more question, you said it's the same size as the other one, that the other two?
That's correct.
How big is it? Do you have an idea how big is it in relation to the Burlington sign there that's?
At the monument sign?
Yeah, no, the, no, the, the new, the new building sign.
Oh, on, on the Burlington?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with how large that sign is and I'm trying to think of it from memory and I can't. This, this, this Lidl sign's, you know, it's eight by eight for the logo and a little bit wider and quite a bit shorter. It's two feet tall for the channel letters. So I mean, when you're up there at 15 feet or so, it's about, I'd say it fits very appropriately with the building, but actually I can't really speak to what the other Burlington sign is, I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, not the monument, I was talking about the building sign.
Exactly the same sign. Yep, exactly the same as all the rest of the Lidl signs, but no difference.
It's exactly the same as the one.
Right. Yes.
All right, so Lidl's also proposing a number of banner signs they're calling on. These are double sided. I'd say they're, they're very, if you're curious as to what they are, they're very similar to kind of seasonal signs. You might see them around Christmas time on light poles. They typically get affixed to the side of light poles, not the fixtures themselves, just the poles. These particular signs that Lidl is looking to add are two and a half feet wide by five feet long. So you get 12 and a half square feet per banner sign. And these banner signs are going to be extending from the Lidl parking area light poles down to that main entrance we talked about, to the center on East Hanover Avenue. So these existing light poles are both along East Hanover Avenue facing into the site. And then there are some mid parking aisle spine light poles that also are being proposed to get added these additional banner signs. So I think these again are one of those identification type signs, there's a Lidl in the facility.
These are only temporary.
These are temporary banners.
So I, I have a question. So it sounds like to me that you're proposing putting these banner signs beyond what will eventually be the property line for that subdivision.
That's correct.
And, and the current landlord is aware and is okay with that?
Yeah, it consented to the application. The current landlord has consented to this application.
And, and when you say temporary, the sign will just say Lidl Food Market? Or is it gonna say something different?
But the banner signs are going to say Lidl Food Market with the logo on them as well as pictures of produce.
Right, okay, so as long as it doesn't say, you know, you know, grand opening and it's not up there for six months or?
They are, they are grand opening signs, that is the way they are identified to us, but they do not say grand opening.
Okay, and the dates that you want these signs?
Does, does Lidl have an official date that they were requesting these signs? No official dates, we'd be at the discretion.
We would need that, right?
Wasn't the request for six months?
I think it was six months. Request is for six months.
Okay, apologize, six months.
Yeah.
How many signs would there be?
There's a total of 19 light poles between the Lidl building and the entrance on Hanover Avenue. So with double sized, if you want to count that as two or one, you're either at 19 or 38.
Sorry, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Is it a double sided banner or are there two banners?
There's, there's two banners, they're separated, one on either side of the light pole. So I think it's, I would say conservatively, I would like to say 38.
Right, so it's 38 or it's 38?
Okay, 38 it is.
38, two by five.
Two and a half by five, yes.
Two and a half by five.
And these are light poles that go all the way to Martin Luther King or just?
Just to the entrance off Hanover Avenue.
There's that many light poles between Lidl and?
There's, there's nine along, along Hanover that they're, nine, well, I don't know.
12 along Hanover.
12 along Hanover and seven within the, the parking field.
Oh, within the parking area.
Yes. Any more questions?
Just the light poles facing Hanover, not the ones on the side facing Martin Luther.
All right, so the last, last sign is.
Chairman, may I ask a question with respect to temporary banners before I forget and I appreciate the accommodation? The, the, just out of curiosity, if you only cover the light poles within the previously sub, approved subdivision area that has not yet been perfected, how many light poles would have banners on them?
I believe the number would be somewhere in the four to six range, but I could get that officially.
Or that, and, and that would be inclusive of the, of those that are along the right of way of East Hanover and those that are interior in the parking area?
That's correct.
So the, the total would be somewhere between four to six?
I'll have to verify that number.
And that would be then somewhere between, this, this is about as good as my math gets, eight to 12 if you were to look at the double.
Okay. Right on.
Thank you. Eight to 12. And do we have a, am I correct, Paul, that our current number per the ordinance is? Well, what is there, is there a number with respect to temporary banners? I gotta double check that myself. For some reason, I thought it was, it was a number, not just the, the square footage and the timeframe. Timeframes, four weeks if I recall correctly.
Correct.
Yeah, so, Mr. Coles, could you?
And I'm sorry for doing, do not, do not exceed 32 square feet. Mr. Rasiopis, you're understanding there's a, a number cap on how many temporary banners before relief is necessary from the ordinance? Or, or is it just simply size and duration?
I think, no, I think, you know, I, I think that there is a cap on signs, temporary signs.
What's the number?
I think it's one temporary sign. 32 square feet is permitted for four weeks.
Is this really a sign?
Yeah, this is a little different than a grand opening, big sign. Yeah, this is more like what I see going down on Madison Avenue on Main Street in Madison. They frequently have like every single one of those has, you know, whatever it is they're advertising, whether it's the Rotary or, you know, whatever.
That's what it looks like, one of the ones you see on a roadway really, more than a grand opening sign that you see in the window. So I, Mr. Warner asked me the question, I think somebody could interpret it that way.
Right.
We think these are different than a regular.
I, I see them differently than a grand opening sign.
I think in a sense it's a directional, you follow the signs and it takes you right to the building, right? You come in the.
There, there is no directional component to the signs, there's no arrows, there's nothing to confuse the driver.
Sort of like you follow the yellow.
It does have identificative purposes, yes.
I view it more as like an event sign. The more light you see that has changed during the season, sometimes on a pole going down the street in Morristown, let's say, on those light poles, when, you know, they, they're advertising or promoting an Easter or some event. So that's how I see it, temporary to, to show people that Lidl is here, come visit us. And, you know, for six months is what we're requesting.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know this is sort of a subjective question, but from the applicant's perspective, if the board were to inquire as to which is more important, the six month versus the four week duration or the 38 signs versus a lesser number? Is there, what's the preference from the applicant?
I think it's 19 of these banner signs.
Well, it'd be 38, 19 poles, two signs on each pole, 38 total.
See, you are really good at math.
Well, missed my calling again.
19 pairs like that.
We would be, I think our preference would be reduce the sign somewhat, but give us the six months to let everybody know we're here.
And I only ask that question to the extent the board may be looking at it and saying, well, they're asking for more signs than usually get, they're asking for a greater duration, where do we go?
Or Burlington's next.
Yep.
I, I just want to make the, well, my, my opinion or point is that I, I really want these stores to be successful and, and I do see this as, you know, an important project with, with, we want all the stores to be successful and this is a big store and it is a store that is maybe less known. So I really have no objection to this. I think six months is like boom, it's over. And for it to get its traction and get its audience and its customers, I just don't really see any downside to it. I see the way these things sit on light poles, they're not obtrusive, they're not, you know, you, if you're not looking for that, that particular shopping experience, you're not even going to see it. So I, that's just my opinion about it.
Mr. Robb?
Just to follow up to what I was asking before, so you're looking for six months on 19 poles. When, if and when this is, is granted to you, when do you anticipate the six months starting? And do you see a need in '25, '26, '27 of asking for something similar?
This is, this is, at least as I understand it, and that's been presented to me, it's really a grand opening type sign, not the ones you see, you know, in the windows, but, you know, by the way, we wouldn't, we wouldn't spend the money because this costs us, you can imagine, a great amount of money to get them up there and put them up there and get them made, but more of a grand opening. So we don't see it happening again and again and again, it's a one-time event.
And I want to just acknowledge my colleague, Ms. Van Order, that I agree, we want these stores to be successful and anything that we can do to help, you know, with, that's, that's reasonable, you know, I think that we're, we're on board with that.
And, and you know, they have to get manufactured and then hung, so a month or a little more than a month, month to month.
Okay. Whatever else. Yeah, Mr. Quone?
Another question about the banners. Would you maintain these banners in good condition if they get damaged? Six months seems like a long time, I'm not sure what the materials are.
We, yes, we would, I think we have an obligation to on, as, as a, as a tenant or owner in the shopping center. And we obviously would commit to that as a condition because we can have, we have a beautiful center there. I think this board did a great job as well as the council in designing or helping to design, collaborating with the design of this center. We won't have torn banners sitting around, that would be terrible.
The decrepit signs reflect just as poorly on Lidl as you guys would make it feel on your couch.
I mean, good question, we'd be happy to add that condition to the board.
Okay. Anything else on the?
Any other questions? Yeah.
I would like to acknowledge Ms. Van Order's comment too, because she sees, she sees really what the purpose of it is that we're here and I, it's easy to lose sight of that, so I appreciate your statement.
All right, well, the last, is that a question?
Okay, I'd just move on to the monument sign.
The, the last sign that, that Lidl is requesting here is a monument sign. It has the maximum allowable by the ordinance of 36 square feet. And just to orient you as to where it is, now I'm talking about the, the main entrance of Lidl at the northern corner of the building. If you were to travel east out to Hanover Avenue, that sign is in a landscaped area, approximately 10 feet setback from the property line. I'll point to it here, but it's just northeast of the Lidl building. And it is an awfully small sign in relation to the size of the overall monument sign in the center. But the sign does have the same branding that you do on the facade here, which is a Lidl logo with a, the words food market beneath it, but it's also surrounded by a, a nice masonry facade of the sign. In addition to that masonry facade, we're also going to have a small landscaping bed around the facade, fully compliant with the redevelopment criteria with some blue switchgrass, excuse me, blue fescue and some switchgrass. Now, I think this monument sign does, I think was brought up a little bit in the original testimony by, by Stephen here and that's, you, you do lose a lot of visibility to your site with the presence of the out parcel, Taco Bell to the north. And that intersection at Hanover Avenue and Menon Ave is, cars stopped at stoplights is a main visibility for a lot of users, especially retail users that require a pass by traffic. I think it's important to note that if you're trying to look all the way down the road or look into the shopping center, you're not ever going to see any representation of Lidl until you get to that overall monument sign of which they just have a panel. So this does provide some bit of a benefit. We're about 200, 300 feet from the intersection there and I think it's, provides a nice advanced warning that you'd be able to turn into the site at the entrance on Hanover Ave or if you're traveling the opposite direction. If you're traveling west, you can turn left and enter through Menon Ave. So this does provide that, you know, offset to, and I know we were kind of talking originally about the need for this sign for Lidl and I think not only are they being blocked by one of their out parcels, there's no sightline to the, the facade signage on the building, but also this is the main end cap user, tenant, soon to be owner of the, of the shopping center there. And it is a identification sign again in a very competitive retail grocery market. So for that reason, I think we need the, the monument sign where it's placed. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So you've given us a picture of what the sign's going to look like. It says, note, stone slash masonry by others. Can we expect that this is what color, generally the color of this stone is going to? Can we expect that this is what color, generally the color of this stone is going to be?
Yes, but if you have a different opinion of what it should look like.
I'm just asking if that's what it's going to look like.
That's the intent of the sign.
It looks great, just asking. Looks great.
Sure.
Yeah, I think Mr. Keller will be talking about the details of the signs also, the signs themselves, so this is more of the placement, sorry. Any other questions?
Jim, based on that question by the chair, Alessio, should the board so desire, would the applicant stipulate that the monument sign would in color and material be as depicted in whatever exhibit was just referred to?
Why don't we wait till we hear the testimony on the details of the sign themselves before we decide?
If you do this way, they could stick to it, you don't have to take it.
Because I think we might put it in a different way, actually.
Don't let me forget that stipulation.
I got it written down.
Don't forget.
I won't, I will.
Any other questions for this witness? Any professionals? Jim?
No.
Paul, anything more? Any questions from the public of this witness? No, I guess not, so, okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We'll hear from Mr. Keller's now.
Our last witness, Mr. Keller.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be back. I've lost track of how many times I've testified on this project, but I'm happy to be back and talking about it again.
But tell the board in what capacity you're here.
Yes, first off, for the record, Eric Keller, Vice President with Bowman Consulting Group, Sixth Campus Drive in Parsippany. I am testifying tonight as a professional planner, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since 1987 or '88, I lost track. Should there be any traffic-related questions, since I was also the traffic consultant for this project multiple times? I am also a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and both my licenses in New Jersey and in other states are in good standing in current.
And you've been accepted as an expert by this board?
I have.
I guess I'm complaining.
Yes, we will accept it, yeah.
Thank you. So bear with me, I can't wear my glasses when I read this, but now I can't see any of you, so I'm going to be doing this. So we are requesting the following variances or deviations, a deviation from the requirements of Section 3-G dash, 3. G point 1 of the redevelopment plan to allow a third wall sign where two are permitted for this building, because it fronts, it's a corner, front side Menon Drive and Hanover Avenue, deviation from the same requirements of the redevelopment plan to allow a monument sign in a location not specified, that being at the Menon Arena driveway or the MLK entrance, which is what the redevelopment plan had contemplated. There is one at Menon Drive, but that's for the collections, which is a residential project behind us. The one at MLK was never installed, was not asked for, was not installed. We are also seeking a variance from Section 95-44H of the zoning ordinance to allow a total of 38 temporary banners, each 12 and 1/2 square feet, to be placed on 19 light poles, two banners per pole, for a period of six months, whereas one temporary sign of 32 square feet is permitted for four weeks. And also, and this is a variance if you determine it to be, it is not a variance if also, if you determine it's not a variance, because the ordinance at 95-44K gives the planning board the ability to waive the strict application of this, which is 12 of the temporary signs are within 20 feet of the right of way of Hanover Avenue, because they're on light poles. The light poles are at 20 feet, since the banners extend towards the right of way, they're about 17, 17 and 1/2, 18 feet from the right of way, and therefore are not meeting that 20-foot setback from the right of way of Hanover Avenue. Now, as you've heard many times before, variances can be granted under NJSA 40:55D-70C, either subsection 1 or 2, 1 being the hardship, and 2 being the planning benefits outweigh the detriments. These are all clearly C2 variance requests, and therefore we will outline the positive criteria for this, and the negative criteria for those same under the C2 criteria. So the purposes of planning that, in my opinion, are satisfied by this request for C2 variances for all of these signs is A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and H, to encourage location and design of transportation routes which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging locations of such facilities and routes which result in congestion or blight. Now, the proposed number of wall signs, as Mr. O'Malley indicated, we have a sign, and I'm sorry, I grew up in this area, to me, east, Hanover Avenue is east and west, so that's west.
Yes.
You know, plan upper left, east is towards MLK, north, Hanover Township is north of this.
Thank you.
It's the way I grew up, I can't change this. I know which way the cardinal arrow is pointing, so. So the, there is an existing sign facing Menon, there is an existing sign facing Hanover. Well, this internal driveway that runs across the entire center and all the way out to Martin Luther King is also a roadway, in my opinion. It's serving this entire shopping center, and this particular building has a jog in it, and it has a jog of sufficient size that placing that same sign of the same size that already exists on the other two facades is appropriate and in context with that building. The Burlington sign, I mean, the Burlington also has a fairly wide facade, and their sign is up very high and is kind of centered in the middle of that building, so there's not a conflict where, you know, you have Burlington and right next to it is Lidl, you know, you don't have that. And I think it's important, as both of the prior witnesses have testified, Lidl is an end cap, it's 1,600 feet from Martin Luther King. This is a very long and drawn-out center, so this needs to have, when you're coming through this center, which I've done a number of times, you don't know, unless you know that's Lidl down at the end, you can't tell. And the, the three signs, all three signs will never be visible at any one time, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. The monument sign, it's conforming in size and setback, it's placed to identify the store location, and as Mr. O'Malley indicated, it reinforces the function of the freestanding sign, where I'm going to put my traffic hat on for a little bit. What you want to do is to create multiple opportunities. We're hoping that as people learn, this monument sign, which is visible from the intersection at Menon, people, hey, I can turn in here at Menon Drive and then come into the shopping center. But if not, then they see the sign and go, oh, there's the store, and then they will enter at the, what I call the center driveway. It aligns with the western driveway of the shop, right? So, and that's where, to me, it's a freestanding sign, different than a monument, because it's elevated above the ground, and Lidl is one component of that overall sign, and there's a lot on there, so this is a reinforcing sign to support that. As I mentioned, the monument sign that is, was constructed, and constructed in accordance with the redevelopment plan at the intersection, is for the residential townhomes to the rear of us. This monument sign is 280 feet, actually 278 feet, from the existing monument sign, so there is plenty of separation, you're not getting signs overlapping, and it's about 800 feet from this monument sign to the freestanding sign at that center driveway. So there's a good spacing amongst the signs, which is something that we as traffic engineers and planners look at, and that you don't want signs lapping onto each other. The temporary banner signs, I think you've heard enough from Mr. D'Amico, Mr. O'Malley, this is all to help promote Lidl. The grocery marketplace in New Jersey is brutal, and there's a lot, they're new to it, they need to attract people, and this goes to their branding and to their marketing to make them a successful store. And I think that is the main focus of that, and to have the multiple signs, when you're driving down Hanover Avenue, you know, there's a lot of other things to look at, and this gives you the opportunity to reinforce, see it a couple times as you drive along, and not be too distracted from your primary focus of driving. The, and I think the size of these signs, 2 and 1/2 feet by 5 feet, is in context with the signs, those light pole, with, I'm sorry, with the light poles, those light poles are 25 feet in height, so it's, when you're on a main street, generally those poles are 12 to 15 feet, and your banner's a little smaller. Well, if you put that size banner on these poles, it would, A, not be in context, it would not fit physically, it also would be impossible to read. You need to have a certain size to be able to read those signs, and I think these signs are in context with the size of the light poles. Now, just to touch on the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan in Section 2A, as it relates to the sign, is to improve the aesthetics of the property and establish site and building standards that will foster high-quality development within the redevelopment area. I think you see that out there now, and I think these proposed signs will be in keeping with that goal, to repurpose the Hanover Avenue frontage with retail and commercial uses. Hanover Avenue has transformed. I worked down the road for a lot of years, we're over in Parsippany, but this corridor has changed tremendously, and I think for the better, for Morristown Township and for Hanover, for what has happened along there. And the other, the last goal and objective is to foster appropriate relationships between buildings, streets, parking areas, recreational areas, walkways, and landscaped areas within the redevelopment area. I think these signs all fit within that, they don't overwhelm it in any way, they don't overstep the aesthetics of the building or of the site itself. Now, we have to talk about the negative criteria. So the board must find that each of the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. To grant these variances, in my opinion, will advance the purpose of planning pursuant to the municipal land use law. We note the following, the signs, both the building sign and the temporary signs are permitted by code. Relief on the number of signs and the location and duration of the installation of the temporary signs is unique to this site and to this tenant. The monument sign is also a permitted sign within the redevelopment plan, just not in this location. It's always anticipated that there would be two monument signs, it was always intended that it would be on Martin Luther King. In this case, because of the specifics of this site, how the shopping center has laid out, and somewhat of the, you know, this end cap being separated really in context from the rest of the main mass of the shopping center, I think it is appropriate in hindsight that the monument sign is appropriately located along here. On Martin Luther King, I don't think it would have fit in as well, which is one of the reasons it wasn't put in, and I think this location, whether it's for Lidl or some other future use, I think it's important, because this end cap is, you know, separated in a way from the rest of the center, and as Mr. O'Malley indicated, it is blocked to a degree by the Taco Bell and the beautiful landscaping that's out there. So, you know, we need to identify this end cap, and that monument sign does it in a tasteful and appropriate manner. There will be no adverse impact to the neighborhood as a relief requested is appropriate for this location of a facility on a county road, and the signs are in keeping with the architectural design as noted. The sign that is proposed, the monument sign that is proposed, the design of that, the overall sign is 6 feet by 6 feet, 36 square feet, which is compliant. The Lidl legend itself is, where's the dimension on there? Well, it's 3 foot 4 inches by 4 foot 4 inches, so it's about, I think it's about 16 square feet or so. The limestone cap and the stone finish on that is, I don't know if it's exactly the same as what is at the corner for the collection sign, but it is in the same theme and tone, and that is the sign that is proposed. The building-mounted sign that we're putting on the east facade, that small eastern facade, is exactly the same as the other two signs that are already up there. So it's my opinion in conclusion that these variances can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good or to the impairment of the zone plan for the following reasons. The third wall-mounted sign is conforming in size, identifies a store from the balance of the shopping center to the east. No more than two signs are visible from any perspective. And from inside the shopping center, the only sign that you will be able to see as you travel west towards Menon is that east facade sign. The monument sign is also conforming in size and setback, is appropriately placed and is sufficiently spaced from the other monument freestanding signs along Hanover Avenue. As I said a couple of times, the second monument sign was permitted in the redevelopment plan, just not in this location. The temporary banner signs are to identify Lidl to the general public and to build their brand. And the setback of the temporary banners along Hanover Avenue, being less than 20 feet to the right of way of Hanover Avenue, is a function of where the poles are located. So it's still a sufficient distance back that they're not intrusive, they're not impactful on the motoring public and creating a hazard in any way. So for all those reasons, I believe that the board has the ability to grant these variances in accordance with the C2 criteria. Thank you.
Any questions for this witness? Yes, Mr. Alessio?
Could you give us the benefit of pointing out on the exhibit that the other?
Exhibit A1.
I'm a little confused as to, you keep saying that this monument was supposed to be somewhere else.
It's not on the drawing.
It's not, the redevelopment plan said that there were to be two monument signs, one at the intersection of Menon Drive and Hanover Avenue. That monument sign was built, and it is for the collections.
Is that the monument sign that we see in this package that you handed out?
No. On the last page of the package.
That's the proposed.
That's a proposed.
Right, but there's a monument sign just before that, where I, I'll call it a.
A partial, no, that, in my terminology, this one, correct, Mr. Alessio?
Correct.
This is a freestanding sign, because it is not, a monument sign in my terminology sits on the ground.
So how many freestanding signs are there?
One.
And how many monuments are there?
With this proposed one, there would be two.
So where's the freestanding sign? So where's the freestanding sign?
Freestanding sign is right at the center driveway, opposite the Shopright driveway.
And where's the monument that exists?
That is up here.
Thank you.
So it's about 1,100 feet between that monument sign and that freestanding.
And the monument's on the corner, right?
The monument on the corner is for collections.
Correct.
But if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to round out the answer, did the other monument sign that was permitted pursuant to the redevelopment agreement, as I understand it, would have, would have been at the MLK Avenue entrance, which maybe you could point out for the benefit of the.
I can't explain, Mr. Warner.
Not on that one, you can, you're right. It's over here, somewhere over there, it's right, it's a little further.
It's down here someplace.
So if I understand correctly, it's not so much that you're proposing a third monument sign, you're not, you're proposing a second monument sign, but one that is not in one of the two permitted locations and therefore that's a deviation from the redevelopment ordinance with respect to the monument sign.
That is correct, Mr. Warner.
Okay, because I think at some point I read something where we had it as a third, but it's really a, just a.
Yeah, no.
Non-permitted location.
That's correct.
So just to be clear on this, Derek, how many monument signs are there currently, if any, for the retail commercial portion of the project?
Zero.
That's right, okay. So just for the board's edification, there was provisions for monument signs for the retail portion of the center at both Menon and MLK. And apparently none of them were built. This is for the retail commercial.
Correct.
But those monument signs, per the redevelopment plan, were only to identify the shopping center, per se, not specific tenants, just so that the board is clear of what the intent of the redevelopment.
Like the name of the shopping center.
Correct. To identify the center.
So what is the monument sign at the Menon entry?
That's for the residential component.
So were they also going to have a residential?
There were residential provisions for residential also, both at Menon and MLK.
So then there's.
And that's all been built on, that's fair.
No, there's one on MLK also.
I meant for the commercial. For the commercial, there's nothing on MLK.
So if I understand correctly, you, they were allowed two monuments for residential, two monuments for commercial and one.
Freestanding.
Correct. What did you call it?
Freestanding sign.
Freestanding sign. And they've built no monuments for commercial. Correct. So theoretically someone else could come back and ask for a monument that's not been corrected yet. Well, yes and no. They could ask for the monument, but again, the redevelopment plan specified that it would be to identify the center, not any particular tenant.
Just trying to follow the, the argument here is that we need it so people know we're a supermarket and we need it.
Yeah, I'm becoming more confused.
So the redevelopment plan allowed two monument signs for the, for the marketplace.
I don't remember it that way either.
Two, one on the property is identifying the residential sign.
Section 3. G. Point 1 says signage in the retail commercial component.
That's correct.
Now, oh, I'm sorry. In section 3. G. Point 2, we're correct, there were, none were built for the commercial residential. The redevelopment plan also permitted a monument sign at the Menon Arena Drive access. Well, it says access points. I'm not sure if that meant down Menon, I think it meant down Menon Drive, not at Hanover Avenue.
I think it meant at the time over here.
That's what I recall, that, that was being discussed at that. I don't.
That's in addition to those, that's correct.
Right, I don't recall that i- if, if the, well, I, I don't recall how it happened, but the monument sign at Menon Arena driveway entrance, which I'm intending or implying or interpreting to be at Hanover Avenue, they did put one in, but it wasn't for the commercial, so.
3G2 with the redevelopment agreement appears to provide for that monument sign, the collections, residential monument sign. 3G1 appears to provide for two additional monument signs under retail commercial component. One at Menon Arena Drive, one at MLK, MLK not built, Menon Arena Drive, I guess for the retail, not built. And it does say to identify the shopping center in there, is that correct? Signs permitted within there shall be specified. Name of the shopping center, neighbor shopping center.
So if we approve this monument sign, it could potentially, even though it would be the first built, it could be the first of three ultimately that advertise the.
I would say probably two, right?
The commercial properties within the marketplace.
Remember, two monument signs are allowed, but they have to only identify the shopping center. So if someone else were to come in for a second monument sign, they would still require a variance if they only identified that tent, in my professional opinion.
Okay.
They'd have to be in one of the two locations that's permitted and they'd have to provide for the center, right? Correct, yeah.
Another question, this gets back to Mr. Les's previous question on, you'd mentioned, do you, well, on the monument sign for collections that's on the corner of Menon and Hanover, how big is that? You know?
I, I don't know specifically, but looking at it, it is in, you know, the same, in, in the allowable sign size.
20 square feet is what's allowed for the residential.
And this one is?
Well, I think the one at, at, at Hanover Avenue and Menon Drive is probably 36 square I, I, I did not measure it because that's, it's, it's there. But I would say, looking at it and I walked up and down Hanover Avenue, that sign is more than 20 square feet.
All I can tell you is what's in the redevelopment.
Yeah.
And it's two signs, one at Menon, one at MLK for the residential, 20 square feet is the.
Yeah, that sounds about right to me because they seem kind of small actually.
And I would say though, if you look at that collection sign, it looks appropriate for what it's intended to do.
Well, I'm, well, I guess my sec- the second question is, you'd mentioned it would be, you know, consistent in theme and tone or something and I would like that, that to be part of the stipulation is that it is.
And then we come back to the stipulation.
Exactly, right.
We all remember it.
Yeah, because, because, you know, it does look like I remember those monument signs and with the limestone cap and the stone side, so I think it, yeah.
And it, and it's the same style, the, the panel that says collections is similar, I don't know that it's exactly the same, but it is in similar in character and size. So you have kind of piers on the side and a base.
Right.
The piers go a little bit higher than.
You're, you're, you're right, Mr. Benoit, it, it does, they actually have kind of like piers and then the sign is a little bit lower.
Just a little, it looks nice.
This is a little bit different design, but I don't think that that's.
Will this monument sign also be either dimmed or off during non-business hours?
As Mr. D'Amico indicated, would be tied into their system, so it would go off when the store was closed.
30 minutes after.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
I hate this sounding ignorant here, but I'm losing it, what's a collections sign?
That's a neighborhood. Yes.
It's the collections of Morris Town.
It's one of Lenore's themes, is the collections.
It's the collection at Morris Town, not Morris Township.
I was thinking my bookie was staying on here.
Oh, man. No comment.
Strike that from the record.
Yes, yeah, Mr. Phil.
Derek, I just wanted to be clear on this, the existing facade signs, they are each 100 square feet?
Correct.
Opposed to 100 square feet?
Correct.
Okay, at one point, I think, for some reason, we were thinking it was 126 square feet, I think a prior witness said that, I just want to be clear, it's 100 square feet, which is the maximum.
It is, and we confirmed that with, with Mr. Slate's office and the prior, previously issued building permits.
And then just one other thing, and this goes back to the issue that Joe brought up and that Linda commented on and we, when I said, let's hear the testimony. So putting aside the temporary banner sign, putting that aside, so dealing with the additional facade sign and the monument sign, is the variance, in your opinion, is the variance request justification related to Lidl as a specific tenant or any prospective end cap tenant at that location, given the physical conditions in fact that?
I, I think it's subject, it, it's not Lidl itself, it is the location and the design of the shopping center.
That's my.
But to testify that the reason why you needed the sign is because people didn't know what Lidl was and that this was a way that people knew it was a food line.
That was Mr.
Not why you needed the market.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that was the justification as to why you needed the money. Now you're saying it's not because it's Lidl, it's because it's an end cap and an end cap should have its own monument sign. I'm trying to understand.
It's actually both, I think. I, I mean, it's, it is both, but I think if this was not Lidl, maybe the temporary banner signs and, and Mr. Phillips was not asking about those, I think that monument sign is important no matter what tenant was in that. Mr. D'Amico said they used to have just Lidl and people were like, what's a Lidl? That's why they put the food market on there so that people knew that it was a food market. But for the monument sign, it reinforces the position that is the store that is located at that end cap that's re- then reinforced by the freestanding sign. And the words food market help tell people what they sell.
I, I'll say one other thing because we were here a number of times and I remember, I don't know if Ms. Murphy remembers, but I remember that she said at one time, and we thought the same thing, that the, the space, the distance from, you know, where Menon is all the way to that freestanding sign, there should be something for these stores here so people know that they're on this side and so a monument sign, I, I don't know if you remember.
I'm, I'm nodding because I agree with you.
We all looked at each other and said, yeah, it, it cries out.
Because otherwise people wander through that parking lot and they don't know where to go.
The other, the other thing too, that's different with the western end of this shopping center, is it is significantly set back from Hanover Avenue. The eastern stores, the first grouping of stores, I mean, you had, they're within 100 feet of Hanover Avenue. It is very easy to see the signs on the facade. These facade signs are difficult to, to read, which is why in, you know, retail centers, there's usually, usually a layering of signs and that's what we're trying to accomplish here. And that's our proposal.
All right, we need to get back to the lighting on the monument sign then. We started to discuss that before, I think, and I think we need to.
I asked that question and they said it would be.
We would, we'll work with the designers, we'll work with your professionals to do a, a, you know.
This is backlit.
A downlight.
The monument's not backlit, the monument's lit from the front. You're asking kind of like for frog legs.
Right, yeah, right. So we'll do, you know.
Let this happen at the administrative level.
Thanks, Jim.
Downward subject for review and approval.
The professionals love that.
Right, okay, okay, yeah.
The wall mounted sign is internally illuminated like the other ones are.
Right.
And the banner signs are not lit at all, other than by the fact that they're underneath the light poles, the light fixtures.
We're not sure, we just push it to Mr. Slate.
Because he has nothing else to do.
We have a lot of.
Any other questions for?
No.
Any questions for the public for this witness? Oh, yes, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Warner, yes, I have.
They took care of everything in our reports, I believe, although there was an environmental commission report, I recall correctly. I don't want to just make sure we covered all of them.
Oh, yeah. Was there for this one?
No, I, I think that's. January 2024, environmental commission, Lidl.
That was more with the plantings.
I don't remember seeing this.
The plantings? Yeah, they had to redo some of the planting from the ground.
Yeah, some landscaping and I don't know how they got the noise, oh, because of the night time.
Yeah, that's right, right.
Yeah, that's how they got the noise. And the, but there were some landscaping conditions, I don't know if they have that.
Well, we, we eliminated landscaping as part of the eliminating the loading area.
Loading areas, okay, so and then the signage, I guess they didn't have any, with respect to signage, right? Site plan review and fire department, nothing. And I believe that is it there, but I did have a couple of questions with respect to the temporary banners and I just want to make sure we're all comfortable from a planning perspective. Because the temporary, our ordinance defines temporary as four weeks, not six months. And our ordinance seems to limit to one temporary sign, not 38. And the request is for beyond the lot itself, in essence, we have a lot, a Lidl lot, we'll call it. And this goes throughout half the shopping center, well beyond the boundary of the Lidl lot. So I guess my questions are from a planning perspective, Mr. Keller, what would you understand the intent of the four week limitation and the one sign versus 38 sign limitations to be? What was the intent?
Well, I think a temporary sign, and when you read that section of the ordinance, it talks about erected for a special event such as an election sale, bizarre, similar event. That's not what really this is, but we didn't have any other way to categorize these signs. So, you know, th- this, these signs are not intended nor driven by a singular event. It's for branding and it's for market, I forget the word that I used, you know, penetration and for, to, to inform the public about who Lidl is and to, to bring them into the store. So it is a little bit different purpose, which is why we're asking for more signs so that there's multiple opportunities as people travel by on Hanover Avenue or within the center itself, because there's many, many stores in this center, to give them an opportunity to say, hey, let me check out the Lidl. The length of time is because it takes time for people to change their behavior. It's not something, you know, people resist change. So this is an opportunity for them to, to be, have it reinforced that this is something that they should come and visit.
And, and I understand that the, the duration, the number of signs, second prong of the negative criteria, no substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Am I correct that that's essentially, to paraphrase, the planning board should not usurp the role of the governing body in zoning by ordinance, by instead zoning by exception or variance? Is that accurate?
It, in certain circumstances, yes, it is. I mean, that's, that's a.
That's what the second prong of the negative criteria stands for, correct?
Right.
And, and there's something called sign pollution, correct? If you, I don't know if I could, it's like beauty in the eye of the beholder perhaps, but what is sign pollution?
It, it's, it's an overabundance of signs where they overlap each other, they interfere with the function of other signs.
So there's the possibility of there being too many in number at some point that would constitute, in your opinion, sign pollution?
Yes, but this does not rise to that level. These signs are substantially set apart from each other, they're not on top of each other, they're creating a, a kind of a corridor view, you know, you're seeing them as you go down the parking. view. You know, you're seeing them as you go down the parking aisles. So to me, that is not sign pollution.
But in addition to those, these 38 banner signs, there's additional signs, monument signs, wall signs, freestanding signs throughout the center, including these temporary banners, would be behind monument signs and in front of wall signs of other non-Lidl buildings, correct?
Well, they, they would not be in front of any other monument signs or freestanding signs. They are separated from those permanent signs. And as far as.
They're in front of wall signs for Burlington and however many other tenants they'll be in front of.
Yes, they are in the parking fields in front of those stores, but they, because they're also perpendicular to Hanover Avenue, and they're perpendicular to the, or parallel to the rows of parking, those sign banners themselves are not blocking the view of the building mounted signs for Burlington, for Red Wings, for whatever the other stores are in that, I think we call that building H. I forget. In that building set back from the roadway.
In your opinion, would the board be unreasonable in the event the board were to determine that all the signs were approved, including the temporary banners being approved for six months, but limited them to the poles that are on the Lidl lot? Would that be unreasonable, in your opinion, for the board to make such a determination, or would it be within their discretion?
Well, anything is within their discretion. Let, let me answer it this way. I think it would be unreasonable to limit it to that narrow portion of the parking lot, just in front of the Lidl store.
I would propose, I mean, I have, I mean, there's a lot of these things that I, the store mount, the, the store signs, the new one on the, on the jog out, I think, the wall sign, that blank, empty wall looks funny now without one, without something on it. I think it fits there also. I remember in the whole marketplace thing, we tried to make it more walkable. We were trying to put sidewalks in there in public areas, and it annoys me when I'm walking down on a shopping area, something like that, and you're walking along the storefronts, and you can't see what's in, you know, the stores in front of you. And I think that's very good, both from a driving and from a pedestrian point of view. So I have no, that one makes perfect sense. The monument sign, given, that seems relatively minor to me, that we're moving it and making it, you know, for Lidl, I think that, and it's in a probably good position, and it's out there in front of and highlighting Lidl. But the number of the banners seem a lot. I kind of liked, I mean, the banners look all right, but extending them all the way down almost to the, the main entrance seems excessive to me. And, but, you know, given the standards right just, just in front of the store or the little property itself seems too restrictive. But I would see something down to like to that main, there's one median, parking median there that's landscaped. That's not that one.
This is Orange Theory. I, I forget what the building number is.
Right.
So I guess we could say in front of the building that Lidl is the end cap for, any of the light poles in that area, is that what you're?
That, that just seems like, you know, too much to me. I mean, I, you know, extending them all, anywhere from that median there, that one, yes. Anything to, and I agree, to the west of that, planned north, seems reasonable to me. I don't know if the, if the rest of the board.
I like that, too.
Yes.
I, I really do see this because it's temporary, and it's a, an attempt to, you know, to do a certain amount of saturation and education of the public. I, I don't object at all. I, I like signs that point me and remind me of things. I wouldn't want them up there permanently. I just have a different point of view about that. I, I, that wouldn't bother me at all. I don't think of them as obtrusive or, you know, and maybe three months or four months instead of six months, I, I would, you know, that, that might be another angle on it. I'm fine with the six months. I'm fine with the 19 poles times two, if we have to, but I don't really, I really still think of it as 19, you know, whether you see them two-sided or not.
I'm going to agree with my colleague on that. I don't, because this is a limited time, and because you're still in the branding stage of your building, the business, and the fact that they are parallel to the parking lot, and they're not going to be blocking any other businesses' frontage sign, I'm okay with the way it is, as, as proposed.
I would also kind of agree with that. Another distinction I would draw is, what's the name of those signs that they, they sit in the ground and they're kind of like shaped like feathers or something?
Flutter, flutter flags.
Flutter flags. You know, I think of like driving down Route 22, and there'll be like 65 of them in front of a liquor store, you know. And this is, you know, these are, these are tasteful, they're, they're, they're off the ground. I'm fine with it.
Joe, you have?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Question related to, I don't think I heard this earlier, but that the landscaping is being eliminated. I think that was the first that was mentioned. Is that, you know, you mentioned that earlier?
We, we only were proposing landscaping. There's landscaping around the monument. So we were only proposing other landscaping when we were talking about having truck deliveries after seven, and they were on that, that burn between the commercial and the residential that we don't even own.
Okay, but I got that. I understand that. But the first I heard it was being eliminated. I understand the trucking, you know, requests after hours delivery is removed, but I just realized that was all part of that. And Eric, Eric first mentioned that, you know, just now. There's also dead landscaping to be replaced that's called out on this plan. Is that going to be done?
Dead landscaping will be replaced.
By Lidl?
Depends on whose property it's on. We will, we will, we can, we, we will, you can make it a condition of the approval, either Lidl, Lidl or, or Morris Marketplace will replace the dead landscaping.
Might be an indoor, right?
Indoor.
Yeah, because that is part of the.
Yeah, and I'm not sure why, how long have these been up there? Shouldn't they be warranted anyway? They should be, right?
A lot of them died like that.
Okay, well.
So I would say that's a Morris Marketplace issue.
Wasn't that part of the original approval? Was maintained the landscaping?
We're just talking about, just so I'm clear, the landscaping on the Morris Marketplace property. Lidl is still part of Morris Marketplace property, not, not the residential, because we don't own that.
Okay, so this is showing stuff to be replaced on the residential property on your plane.
Is it behind Lidl?
Yes.
That was all part of the, that was all part of the truck deliveries at night and needed the consent of the residential. So the residential should really take care of the dead landscaping.
I'm sure they would probably consent to you replacing it. Just a guess.
I don't know if I could commit the, on behalf of Morris Marketplace or Lidl to replace dead landscaping on property that's not ours, and for which, and for which we're really not asking. None of the relief we're requesting has anything to do with the landscaping on the burn. Len R. should, should take care of it. Happy to ask Len R.
If, if, what if the residential proprietors don't want to do it, then you don't have to do it. If they're okay with it, then you can do it. I'm just going by what's on the plan. I understand it's subject to.
Again, the plan, that area was done because we were asking for the, we wanted to make sure that we were going to not only replace dead landscaping, but enhance it for the late night delivery of a truck. We were also talking about other mitigation related to that. But since, since we drew that as part of our application, you know, we don't, we don't think, and because our application has no bearing on that burn whatsoever, really should be the residences to replace that.
I agree with your feeling.
Thank you.
Getting back to the banners, I'm not sure we finished that conversation. I agree with Mr. Bai that it would be nice to have fewer banners, maybe 10 light poles, maybe eight light poles, or if instead it were all 19 light poles, to restrict the time period from six months to something shorter, like three months or four months. And I don't know if there's anyone else other than just the two of us on the board who feel that way, but I'm curious to know if that's the case.
I vote for 19.
19 for six months?
Yeah.
But by Steve Matt, that's 38.
It's 19 light poles.
19 sets of banners, right, okay. No, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I have no problem with that also. It's temporary.
Okay, right, okay. I'm, just, any other questions? Jim, Paul, nothing? You, we're okay, Steve, with?
Once we go to the public, we are.
Uh, okay, any questions from the public? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Wait a minute, any comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, now.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve this application, but I'm going to ask Mr. Warner to help me because I'm a little confused as to the idea of a waiver that the planner brought up. So.
I'll do my best.
38 signs, but I'm not sure if that's granting them a variance or a waiver.
Well, a few things. I'll, I'll go through a whole bunch of them. As Ringo said, with a little help from my friend, maybe Joe Cocker, I don't know. The, as I understand, it's an application for amended site plan approval, deviation from the redevelopment agreement for a third wall sign, where only, whereas only two are permitted for Lidl per 3G1 of the redevelopment agreement. Redevelopment agreement deviation for a monument sign in a location, for the retail component, in a location other than the two provided for in the redevelopment agreement, as well as for Lidl alone as opposed to the shopping center as a whole. Got it, then I pull. The, the, also deviating from 3G1 of the redevelopment agreement, those are the two redevelopment agreement deviations. And I believe it would be variance relief from the temporary signage provisions for temporary signs for six months versus a maximum of four weeks permitted, and temporary signage in number of 38, and as opposed to apparently one. And also a, I believe it would be still also a variance for, for some of the temporary signage to be located within 20 feet of the right of way. The former violating Section 95-44H, meaning the number and, and duration of the temporary signage, and the latter, the location within 20 feet of right of way for some of those temporary signs violating Section 95-44K. That is the relief. And if nobody objects or corrects that, the conditions of approval, as I understand it, would be downward lit monument signs, subject to the review and approval of our township engineer. And the signage would have to be maintained in good faith, the temporary signage and all of it for that matter, and that is provided for in the redevelopment agreement and in our ordinance. But it'll be an explicit condition as well. And the color, materials, theme and tone of the proposed monument sign would be consistent with the existing monument sign, as well as the monument sign as depicted in the plans. That would be subject to the review and approval of our township planner.
Sure. There is no existing monument sign?
There is, the collections one, I believe, is what was referred to as the existing monument sign. That's the residential one, yeah. But, but I believe that is being used as a barometer for consistency purposes. And no landscaping conditions, so that's all I have on conditions.
Did you mention the monument signs illumination on or off 30 minutes?
Oh, I didn't. Thank you. Right, the monument signage and, and the lighting of the wall signage would also be.
They said that's their practice, but we have it in the resolution.
Right, it'll be in the resolution, that it'll be off within 30 minutes post-closing.
I second it.
I have, I have one question. With respect to these temporary banners, do we have any, do we want to establish some expectations of when they would go up?
They said within a month or two.
A month or two.
To make them first.
Is two, within two months of adoption of resolution, which is going to be 30 days probably from now anyway?
Yeah.
That's 90 days.
It's 90 days.
But within two months of when, adoption of the resolution?
Which is next month. That's 90 days.
Yeah. Option, if we get it done and adopted next month, which I suspect we will. Okay, temporary banners. And the temporary, temporary banners are going to be, the locations and the, and the, the locations will be on the poles, obviously, as depicted in the plans. And this is an amended site plan approval. But I think the, the banners will be similar to those depicted in the.
That is correct.
Plan submitted?
Correct.
I assume that's certainly what the board was expecting, when they said they looked nice. So that's, that's the motion, that's the second.
Yes.
And then order. Yes. Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Bai?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
I say already.
Already got him.
Double yes.
Vote for me early, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to other matters, anything from the legislative committee?
We, we continue to, to meet, to discuss the Madison Avenue corridor, and we're looking for some information from Mr. Slate at our next TCC, TCC meeting, that would give us an indication of a particular direction that we might be going in. I don't know if it's right to reveal it right now, probably after next, after next TCC meeting, if there's any viability.
Okay, oh, the other item is the, you know, Sonny distributed the, the Board of Adjustment annual report. Any comments or thoughts on that? I was going to say, yes, we did receive it. I would like people to think about, notice that they're thinking of changing the checklist. And I know the Environmental Commission has been advocating that they, that our checklist be beefed up somewhat.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Environmental Commission has, you know, the Board of Adjustment has talked about amending their checklist for application approval, and the, I know the Environmental Commission has been pushing, you know, increasing ours a little bit, so.
Do we know what we're deficient? What's, what's, what's driving the?
There's just, it's just pretty bare bones now. I mean, there's a lot more things in there. I mean, I, you know, we could look, we could.
They're, they're wanting to model another town's environmental commission checklist, which is much more comprehensive.
Yeah.
Is it necessary?
Yes, I think so.
It's certainly worth considering, I, I think. So it may be some future meeting we could have the DC come in, who've done a very nice job in their, their, their reviews of the, the applications, I think. And so we could have them come in and talk about.
It'll make it more thorough.
I should know the answer to this, maybe, but is the same checklist used for the Board of Adjustment as the planning board?
Sonja and I were going to look at that in another different checklist.
But, okay, so we can leave that for a future meeting, we'll see if we can.
And just on that note, I did look at our. And just on that note, I did look at our, the planning board checklist for these applications, and, you know, it does cover, it probably needs a little kind of cleanup, but it doesn't specifically mention wetland, but it talks about, you know, wet areas. I think there's just some terminology that's changed. I don't know what level they're looking to go to based on, you know, tend to go to an extreme.
Right. Yeah, but, yeah, I think it's worth discussion.
But we, we, Sonja and I are specifically going to look at the Board of Adjustment to see if, you know, it sounds like the stuff may be missing, but-
Yeah, okay, yeah, right, okay.
It seems to me to be desirable to have the same checklist for both planning boards. I'd have to think that would help you also.
Is it? Double check it, but I, I thought we-
Well, there's some, there's some differences, but-
It's usually dependent upon the relief sought, not, so for example, for D variances, we're not going to have one-
Right.
-in the board, because we can't have D variances there. But, but there, I, I don't think I've ever seen them different for one board than the other. But we double check.
Yeah, okay.
There is, if I may, Mr. Chair, there is one other, I noticed, recommendation that the Board of Adjustment was making with, with respect to planning testimony of, of the board to, for the planning board, and I guess the governing body, the two recipients of the annual report, to consider, and that is whether there should be a requirement in the checklist for applicants when providing professional planning testimony, to have an actual planner's report submitted at least 10 days in advance, so that the planning testimony isn't a surprise, I guess, at the time of the hearing, for the planner or, or the board, you know, members of the public to begin with. That is done in some towns, I will tell you, as a matter of personal knowledge. It's also not done in some towns. The, they don't limit it to D variance requests for the Board of Adjustment. This would be, so if it were, it would only be for the Board of Adjustment, planning testimony. I've seen it generally, I don't know if you've seen generally for, more so for, for D variances.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, my own comment on this is most of the municipalities, as you are well aware, Steve, don't require, it's really far more the exception than the rules that require a planning report submitted. I know that, because I also, also advise the zoning board that they, and it's not clear in this recommendation, that for D variances, they're now requiring a, a report from the planner, which I, I personally am fine with. For, this is just my opinion, for applicants before the zoning board that are coming in for, let's say, you know, a deck variance or pool variance where the applicant's a resident, I think it's burdensome-
Yeah.
To, to ask them to have a planner do a report, which costs, as a planner, right, it costs more money to do the report and then provide the oral testimony. I just don't think it's necessary for a lot of applications.
If I could pitch on the spot, or do you think it's-
A D variance is different.
Yeah.
And I have no issue with that requirement, but for a lot of the zoning board stuff, it's just an added expense to homeowners, in my opinion.
And I did discuss that issue with Dave, and I don't know how far he pushed that point, because I, I too thought it was appropriate for D variance, but excessive, you know, for C variance, for that type of thing. And then there may even be some D variances that are kind of pretty straightforward and, you know, maybe the board has, you know, the board would have the ability to say, hey, we don't need a formal report, you know, up, up to the, you know, the Board of Adjustment numbers on that. If it's something, you know, that we have a D variance, it's like a technical D.
But again, to put this in the context, or remind everybody in the context, this is the, the zoning board of adjustment in their annual report, telling the governing body and the planning board, the two recipients of the board, hey, based on our experience, you might want to consider a, we recommend you consider an ordinance that does the following. And so that's one of them. So do you want to change the environmental protection checklist? Do you want to, do you want to put together an order, or have an order put together whereby at least D variances for the zoning board of adjustment, the applicant submits a plan as reported 10 days in advance? That's for your consideration as a result of the annual report.
I think what happens is, and I don't remember, I'm, you obviously have on the Board of Adjustment as well, and I don't remember having a specific discussion and making it into a recommendation, but apparently you did.
Back to the report.
What happens is for a large application, it takes weeks and weeks to do, a number of meetings, you, you go through, listen to all these different things, and then the planner gets up, and in one fell swoop, comes out with a summary of all things, and you're trying to go through your notes, you're trying to remember this, you're trying to remember that, and I think it would be helpful, if you did have the report first, if there's a very lengthy sort of application with lots of issues, you could be prepared for that fell swoop. You could really think about all the variance requests and the purposes of that, then think of the positive and negative. I mean, a few times I asked the, the, when I was a chair, I asked the planner, or asked the applicant to address planning issues as you're, where this has come up, so we're prepared to listen to that when the planner does come up. Then I always do that, I don't know, I didn't always think to, to remind of that, but I think maybe a written report on a large application, like the application might take care of that. Be more prepared to really think about the summary of all the issues being discussed.
Could it be as simple as a listing of points as opposed to a written report?
I hadn't thought about the type, but if, maybe, maybe, because if you have the point and the positive and negative in front of you before it begins, even if the planner changes things around a little bit, will have a sense of what's going to be discussed, that we can be prepared for that. So that might be sufficient.
I mean, the other thing is what some towns do is they don't require the planning report, but as part of the application, as you know, they'll require to set forth in the application, you know, the reasons, the positive, negative criteria, that at least the board has some flavor, and then that's supplemented by the planner when they, when the planner gives the verbal testimony. A lot of times that with applications, that's something you might, you know, want to consider as well. So at least you have some indication of what's coming, without having to require a, you know, a planning report for every application before the board.
Right. That might be perfectly fine.
For the legislative committee to consider it.
Yeah, we need to, any more discussion of this, go forward on this?
All right. And I don't think we're ready to say anything in specific now, right?
Okay. Uh, okay, we'll move on. I guess there's no public comments. No public?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
No close session.
Yeah, no close session, right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I got a chance to second.